Buenas tardes, quiero pedirles a todos que busquen un asiento. Buenas tardes, soy la comisaria de audiencia pública del condado de Los Ángeles sobre relaciones humanas. Es una audiencia pública sobre la policía y las relaciones humanas en el distrito supervisador. Quiero bienvenerte a todos. Mi nombre es Isabel Gunning, profesora de derecho en la Escuela de Derecho de San Francisco. Es mi honor y privilegio presidiendo esta audiencia. Agradezco a todos ustedes por estar aquí, por tomarse el tiempo de estar aquí. Quiero presentar a los otros comisionados que están aquí conmigo. Les dejaré que hagan su introducción.
Mi nombre es Molina Abdulla, presidenta de la Comisión de Relaciones Humanas y Policía que convocó estas audiencias. Represento al segundo supervisor del distrito de San Francisco.
¿Tiene la oportunidad de escuchar más palabras de la comisaria?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Kripee Mulherny. Represento al tercer distrito y profesionalmente soy la oficina financiera principal de la Fundación de las Mujeres de California. Espero escucharles de todos. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Valdivia Moncada, también soy la senadora del tercer distrito. Vivo aquí en el valle de San Fernando. Realmente agradezco a todos por estar aquí. Me gustaría que mostraran sus historias para nosotros.
¿Podríamos preguntarle al señor ministro de esta hermosa iglesia que está organizando esta audiencia? Estoy muy grata por su disposición a tenernos. Dr. Wayne Winro, que estaba en el estado de California.
Permítanme bienvenerte a esta audiencia hoy. Esta audiencia ha sido bien anticipada. Es el producto de algunos problemas particulares de mí mismo y de esta congregación, así como de una coalición de líderes afroamericanos que reunimos, relacionados con estos problemas que hemos enfrentado, no solo con miembros de esta iglesia, relacionados con las circunstancias recientes de Cristo en Edi, sino también en nuestra comunidad en general. Conducimos una reunión local que fue bien publicada hace poco, inmediatamente después de las cosas que tuvieron lugar en Baton Rouge, Louisiana, donde estábamos implementando lo que se llama un orden de ley de alto nivel entre líderes afroamericanos, clergamentos y aquellos que consideramos políticos. Cuando Josh entró a mi oficina y habló de lo que estaba haciendo esta comisión, nos abrazamos de inmediato. Nos abrazamos a los comisionados que han venido, nos abrazamos a la comunidad. Y queremos que se sienten libres, tienen libertad de expresión aquí, aunque esto puede llamarse santuario, pero ahora es para audiencia pública. Así que nos abrazamos a ustedes. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Quiero decir algo breve en este punto. Hemos estado llevando a cabo audiencias sobre la policía, en parte porque, por supuesto, es, como mencionó el doctor Winro, algo que es prevalente en el país, así como en nuestra comunidad. La Comisión de Relaciones Humanas ha estado trabajando en problemas de la policía desde el golpe de Zootsup. En la rebelión del Watch, publicamos un informe. Cuando surgió el 50º aniversario, decidimos que necesitábamos examinar nuevamente los problemas de la policía y las relaciones humanas en cada distrito de los condados de Los Ángeles. Esto es lo que se trata esta audiencia. Esta es nuestra cuarta audiencia. Se ha dedicado a muchas de las otras distancias, esta es la última, aunque tendremos dos más que involucre a las mujeres y LGBT, así como una exclusiva para las mujeres. Venimos aquí hoy a escucharles, a escuchar sus experiencias con la policía, oficiales y agencias. Queremos escuchar sus sugerencias para mejorar la justicia y la equidad en la policía. Queremos escuchar sus ideas para construir o mantener relaciones positivas entre la policía y la comunidad. Antes de hablar sobre la estructura, permítanme, como les prometí, tener a la comisaria Molina Abdulla aquí. Ella es, como les dije, la presidenta de la comisión que fue la fuerza que impulsaba esto.
Todos, y gracias al pastor por abrir la iglesia. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Sé que el tercer distrito está rindeendo dinero. Muchos de ustedes tuvieron que viajar por lugares bastante largos, del área de Venecia. Así que gracias por venir y nos damos cuenta que es una inversión. Así que gracias por hacerlo. Quería darles un poco de antecedente sobre por qué estamos haciendo estas audiencias. Esta es la quinta audiencia, la audiencia del distrito. Tendremos, como mencionó la comisaria Gunning, una sexta audiencia para mujeres y personas trans para documentar sus experiencias con la policía, así como, no es una audiencia exclusiva, pero es una audiencia para la policía. Le pedimos a la policía que no esté presente para las audiencias de la comunidad. La razón por la que hicimos ese pedido es porque reconocimos que se mencionó mantener confianza con la policía. Necesitamos reconocer que lo que hemos oído hasta ahora en estas audiencias, así como lo que muchos estudios dicen, es que no hay confianza entre las comunidades y la policía. Y hay razones para eso. Queríamos abrir espacio para que puedan sentirse libres de ofrecer sus experiencias con la policía, para que no se sientan inhibidos en absoluto al tener a la policía presente cuando cuentan sus historias. Quiero decir que no tenemos la capacidad de prohibir a la policía de estar aquí, pero le pedimos que no venga. También no les hemos contactado para animarlos a venir. Así que así es como se estructuran las audiencias. El objetivo aquí es que ustedes sean imaginativos, que sean bothos honestos en la contabilidad de sus experiencias y experiencias de la gente que les rodea, así como ser imaginativos en lo que piensan que la solución debe ser. Lo que pasará desde aquí es que generaremos un informe. Y en ese informe habrá una lista de mejores prácticas y sugerencias que vienen de ustedes como miembros de la comunidad. Nuestra esperanza en colaborar con las organizaciones es permitir que este informe sea algo de lo que pueda abogar. Que sea un informe oficial que viene de un organismo condado, la Comisión de Relaciones Humanas, que pueda usar para abogar. No nos vemos como si tuviéramos todas las soluciones. Permítanme ser muy claro, esta comisión tiene muy poca autoridad. No podemos hacer que la policía cumpla con las recomendaciones que ustedes traen. Pero podemos publicar esas recomendaciones y permitir que sean una herramienta para ustedes. Queremos ser muy claros en eso, especialmente durante estos tiempos. Y otra de las razones por las que no invitamos a la policía a la sala, otra razón por la que no invitamos a la policía a la sala es recordar lo que está pasando en términos de cierres, lo que está pasando en términos de disparos involucrados por oficiales, donde sabemos, al menos para LAPD, el número de disparos involucrados por oficiales. Este año es un 30% más de lo que era el año pasado. También queremos recordar lo que pasó en el tercer distrito, en particular queremos citar al Brandon Glenn y recordar lo que pasó con el asesinato de Brandon Glenn en Venecia. Queremos hacerlo lo más abierto posible para que puedan ser honestos sobre sus experiencias. De nuevo, les agradezco por venir y esperamos su testimonio y sus recomendaciones.
Gracias, comisaria Abdulla. La estructura es que lo que nos gustaría que hicieran todos es que si quieren hablar y tienen dos opciones en términos de dónde pueden estar en hablar, pueden... Creo que aquí abajo. Sí, uno está aquí, pero si... Oh, está por la izquierda. Lo siento. Así que tienen una opción. Si quieren subir las escaleras, pueden hablar con nosotros desde allí. Pero si están rechazados por las escaleras o quieren estar allí, pueden hablar desde allí. Necesitamos que hagan su forma de hablar, que pueden obtener en el pasillo allí antes de entrar al santuario, a mi derecha, o a su izquierda. Debo decir, ya que estoy señalando en esa dirección, que las salas de baño también están ahí, así que probablemente lo vieron cuando entraron aquí. Pueden testificar anónimamente, lo que significa que tienen algunas opciones. Pueden usar solo su primer nombre, pueden usar un pseudonimo, un nombre falso si quieren. También pueden enviarnos un correo electrónico, o hablar con el personal que está fuera, para enviarnos anónimamente. También pueden, si no quieren hablar aquí, hay la sala tranquila justo allí en la esquina. Si te vuelves atrás, verás a Andy Grace. Allí pueden ser videotaped en la sala tranquila porque no quieren hablar aquí. O si, porque solo te voy a dar dos minutos para que podamos permitir que todos hagan. Si quieren hablar más de dos minutos y no tenemos la oportunidad de volverles a la parte final, porque también lo vamos a permitir, pueden hacer un testimonio adicional en la sala tranquila hoy. Así que parece que hubo algún tipo de disparo fuera de la iglesia o cerca de la iglesia. Si ven a la policía pasando, no es por esto en absoluto. Aparentemente podría ser porque tendrán que manejar algo que está fuera. Si obtengo más información sobre lo que es, te diré. Por ahora estamos bien aquí. Como mencioné, tendrán dos minutos. Podrán ver cuánto tiempo tienen allí. Todo esto es, en realidad, siendo reportado. Tendremos interpretación simultánea, español y inglés. Quiero parar todo lo que acabo de decir y preguntar a alguien a quien debería haber presentado. Él va a pensar que ni siquiera le gusta. Él es nuestro director ejecutivo y no hay nada que la comisión no pueda hacer sin él, Robin Toll.
Gracias, Isabel Gunning, presidenta. Quiero decir que esta audiencia está siendo grabada en inglés y español. Y si necesitan orígenes para la traducción en español, pueden ir allá atrás y hay gente que puede ayudarles. Y tal vez si quieren testificar anónimamente o no, tienen que rellenar un formulario. Y se puede hacer esto también a través de un testimonio privado con este señor atrás que puede llevarle otra aplicación para poder grabar sus testimonios en español.
Lo último que debería mencionar es que hay comida. No pueden comer en el santuario, pero la cocina está, cuando salen de la puerta, a la izquierda. Así que hay algunos sanduíches y agua, y creo que tal vez un café también que pueden tomar en la zona de cocina y luego volver a la audiencia. Quiero animar a todos ustedes. Sé que tienen muchas cosas importantes que decir. Puede que haya mucha pasión, pero, por supuesto, queremos respetar el uno por el otro cuando hablamos de estos problemas muy difíciles y hablamos directamente de corazón. Quiero empezar ahora con el testimonio real. Lo que tendremos aquí son nuestras organizaciones centrales, el Comité de Justicia de Venecia, la Coalición de la Policía Reformada de Santa Monica, la Coalición de la Coalición de la Policiación de LAPD, y, por supuesto, la Iglesia de Cristo. Quiero agradecer a esas organizaciones de inmediato. Escucharán de ellos por alrededor de tres a cinco minutos, supongo. Tenemos un timer que solo alcanza tres, pero para aquellos de ustedes que viven de esas organizaciones, solo deben saber que todavía no quieren que se mantengan en los cinco minutos. ¿Tenemos a Luis Winro aquí? No aún. Peggy Lee Kennedy, por favor, venga.
¿Hola? ¿Me escuchas? Hola, soy Peggy Lee Kennedy con el Comité de Justicia de Venecia. Muchas gracias, comisionadas y personal de esta comisión y de la iglesia. Muchas gracias por mantener la audiencia. Pensé que sería bueno darles una historia de unas horas en Venecia, unas horas. Porque hay un problema. La policía es la respuesta primaria y responder a la desaparición. Es un problema porque eso lo hace un crimen. El 7 de marzo, estaba conduciendo a Hoot. Estaba andando a norte en Lincoln y iba a turnar a la izquierda en Rose Avenue. Y justo antes de eso, en la calle anterior, miré y vi a este equipo de limpieza con mucho LAPD y todos los camiones involucrados, tirando toda una tentilla hacia un carrito de basura frontal quemando. Y tomé una foto con mi teléfono mientras conducía. Lo siento. Traje una presentación, pero no existe aquí en este momento. Así que paré en Rose, tomé mi cámara más profesional y pasé a la escena. Inicialmente vi algunos objetos muy bien cargados de personas desaparecidas alejadas de la área de limpieza y mucha policía. Y en Venecia tienen un nuevo programa, lo que sea, llamado Venecia C3. Se supone que es comunidad, condado, ciudad. Pero realmente lo que es, es policías a la tercera poder. Eso es lo que realmente es. Porque para cualquier persona de comunidad, condado, lo que sea, C2, habrá policías al menos tres. Policías a la tercera poder, o policías cubiertos si vienen. Y esto es nuevo. Han estado haciendo estas cosas de sanación con la policía, cantidades enormes de policía. Oh, no lo creerían, hazmat, ropa de higiene, es raro. Es muy costoso, muy costoso. Y están usando ropa blanca de hazmat como si la gente fuera la plagua. Así que llego allí, hay al menos ocho policías que puedo identificar. Ellos me ven. Una persona se encuentra en una SUV roja de la ciudad de Los Alamos y está en una SUV roja con placas de Arizona. Y gastó la mayor parte de su tiempo hablando con la policía. De hecho, había tres de los C2s, que se supone que es comunidad, y gastaron la mayor parte del tiempo hablando con la policía. Una mujer fue detenida, otra desaparecida fue detenida en la calle. Llevaron la grabación de la policía. Así que pasé por allí a tomar fotos de lo que estaba pasando con este incidente porque si vas a fotografiar, hay una mejor posibilidad de que la persona no sea arrestada. Así que la liberaron, pero luego me persiguieron. Me atraparon. Había una policía o un policía, una caja de cobertura roja bajo el bloque. Y una de las policías me atrapó y me empujó y me hizo ir al otro lado de la caja de cobertura que todavía estaba por la calle. Y apreté el motor de la película de mi teléfono y lo estaba proporcionando a la comisión. Así que esto no es unusual, lo que está pasando aquí. La mujer que fue detenida por un arresto por extenso periodo de tiempo tenía un perro. Hice varias conversaciones con la mujer de C2 que llegó en la SUV roja, la mujer de Los Alamos, con placas de Arizona. Y dije, ¿qué está pasando con esta mujer? Y ella dijo, bueno, le ofrecí su soporte. Y dije, pero tiene un perro. Y ella dice, bueno, si esa mujer solo recibió el certificado de servicio, ese soporte la llevaría. Sabes, eso no va a pasar a tiempo pronto. E incluso si le diera el certificado, simplemente sucedió que este fin de semana pasado estaba en la biblioteca de Venecia y cometieron una gran violación de la ADA con una persona desaparecida con un perro de servicio. La rodearon con la policía que está esperando frente a la biblioteca. El bibliotecario mintió y dijo que el perro bromeaba con un niño. Yo fui la testigo, la única testigo dispuesta a levantarse y decir algo en esa biblioteca sobre este pobre hombre desaparecido que estaba rodeado por la policía en una biblioteca. Todo el mundo estaba mirando hacia abajo porque temían ser tirado de la biblioteca, el único lugar cotidiano donde podrían estar y usar el baño y internet y salir de los elementos. Sabes, no lo culparían. Y luego, después de que hicieron que este hombre dejara las pruebas, quiero decir, no solo la entrada, sino toda la propiedad, que es el parque fuera, luego el guardia de seguridad siguió viendo a mi. Esto es algo muy costoso, sabes. Cuando la gente es criminalizada, se pasa al condado. Van al juzgado, van a la cárcel. Tenemos una clínica. Y el mes pasado tuvimos que mover nuestra ubicación de la clínica porque es gratis, en lluvia, en una nueva ubicación. Había 21 personas que aparecieron con boletos que estaban siendo criminalizadas. Y recibimos abogados voluntarios que aparecen en la cárcel. La cárcel donde inicialmente tienen que ir porque la línea de la West LA estaba cerrada, está en Beverly Hills. Sabes, así que aparecemos en Beverly Hills a su favor. Y luego tratamos de conseguirlos para el juicio en Santa Monica. Luchamos estos boletos, cada uno de ellos porque son boletos bogus. La clínica fue iniciada en 2014 como respuesta al municipio municipal Mike Bond y ir frente a la comisión de la policía y pedir más policía en Venecia porque todos estos policías de vigilancia de la comunidad se desesperaron de los desaparecidos en Venecia. Así que consiguieron Metro y los policías de caballos constantemente emitiendo boletos, boletos tras boletos, y son principalmente bogus. Y costan a todos.
Muchas gracias. ¿Hay alguna pregunta?
¿Pueden hacer preguntas? No sé, otros comisionados. ¿Qué preguntas?
Y sacé todo en este flash drive. Podrían tenerlo.
Eso es genial. Sé que pueden enviarnos un correo electrónico y lo subiremos a...
Lo voy a dar a Ray y puedo enviarlo, pero parte del video, así que no sé cómo hacerlo.
Eso es genial. Tengo un par de preguntas solo para el registro. Como mencionaron, la última, ¿pueden decir cuál es el acrónimo?
La autoridad de servicio de servicio de desaparición de Los Ángeles, que es una cooperación entre el condado de LA y el condado. Y sabes, el condado fondea esfuerzos, esfuerzos desaparecidos, no solo de Los Alamos, sino otros esfuerzos como estos, que sean las calles limpias o lo que sea, ayuda a fundar estos esfuerzos desaparecidos, que son principalmente policías cubiertos. Realmente lo son. Hay tantas policías, es inútil. Y es una situación muy hostil. No es sorprendente que Brandon Glenn fue disparado, sabes, porque solo pidieron a la policía que vaya a buscar a las personas desaparecidas. Y eso fue en 2014. Fue asesinado en 2015, pero no fue el único que fue asesinado ese año. Hubo tres personas desaparecidas asesinadas en Venecia ese año. Así que, quiero decir, las policías no son agentes de servicio social. No me importa qué clase de entrenamiento tienen, son entrenados para asesinar a personas y cumplir con la ley.
Así que hay dos más preguntas rápidas. Una, mencionaron los boletos. Y sé que otras organizaciones de servicio de servicio y otras organizaciones de desaparición también están haciendo clínicas de boletos, como la de LA Can, que es...
Nuestra es la misma, es la misma clínica básica.
Correcto. ¿Pueden compartir qué son estos boletos? Y la última pregunta que tengo para ustedes es, ¿qué recomendaciones tienen? Como decían que la policía no debería ser las que respondan a la desaparición. ¿Qué recomendaciones tienen para cómo abordar la desaparición en la condado?
Bien, los boletos son lo que yo llamo boletos de vida. Y muchas ciudades en todo el país han creado estos boletos para buscar a personas de color, pobres y desaparecidas. No es nada nuevo, pero es un altímetro en Venecia porque estamos experimentando lo que yo llamaría gentrificación extrema. Así que está sentado en una esquina. LAMC 4118D, ¿vale? Como si fueras una hipster y te sientas en la esquina de Venecia, definitivamente no vas a obtener uno de esos boletos. Pero cualquier persona desaparecida sentada en la esquina podría fácilmente obtener uno de esos boletos. Eso es solo un ejemplo de cómo funciona. O fumar en la carretera. Anyo que sea puede fumar en la carretera, pero una persona desaparecida definitivamente lo conseguirá porque la policía está allí para buscar a los desaparecidos. Hay una situación realmente especial que pasa después de las personas desaparecidas. Justo como un grupo de grupos de gangs que van a buscar a niños y jóvenes, es lo mismo. ¿Cuál fue la otra pregunta? Oh, la solución. Bueno, definitivamente tenemos que stop criminalizando a la gente como si fuera algún tipo de solución. Tenemos que... Es tan costoso. Tenemos que... Si el condado está fondeando algo que es policías cubiertos, ¿por qué? Tenemos que preguntar que están dando su dinero por esfuerzos de la policía. No es una solución. Está bien, tienes a los proveedores de servicios allí diciendo que están dando servicios, pero en realidad hablas con la policía. ¿Y qué servicios realmente están proporcionando si no tienen la vivienda para que estas personas vayan? Así que, quiero decir, es un dilema. ¿Primero la vivienda, tal vez?
Primero la vivienda, sí.
Puede ser un concepto que el condado podría adoptar.
Primero la vivienda para los desaparecidos.
Sí, que en realidad podría ser la solución para la desaparición, son casas. Y la mayoría de las personas que viven fuera quieren una casa. Así que eso es solo un hecho.
Gracias, muchas gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Michelle Winn.
Soy Sherry Walker.
Estamos con la Coalición por la Policía Reformada en Santa Monica. Muchos de ustedes probablemente tienen una imagen de Santa Monica como una ciudad muy progresiva, relativamente rica. Sí, ambos. ¿Tenemos problemas con la policía? Sí, tenemos. Si no hay nada más que recuerden de nuestras declaraciones hoy, me gustaría que recuerden estas dos palabras. La policía necesita ser democratizada. Tiene que estar bajo el control de nosotros, los ciudadanos de estas ciudades en el estado de California. La policía es una de las pocas agencias que no está bajo el control de los ciudadanos. A diferencia de nuestros buques de educación, que tienen un control enorme de los ciudadanos, la policía es una droga en comparación con esa agencia. No necesitamos entrar en cómo fue así, pero el hecho es que es así y no debería ser. Necesitamos democratizar nuestros departamentos de policía. Trasladarlos bajo el control de aquellos de nosotros a los que servimos. En Santa Monica formamos una Coalición por la Policía Reformada en el aftermath de algunos incidentes de alto perfil. Hicimos una encuesta durante uno de los días de diálogo en el Château Ocean Park. Y el 75% de los participantes dijo que sentían que la policía trataba a la gente de manera diferente en base a la raza. El 100% de la gente dijo que tomaría acción para contrarrestar esa creencia. La Coalición por la Policía Reformada se fundó con la idea de que nosotros, los residentes de Santa Monica, necesitamos tomar control sobre nuestro departamento de policía. Tenemos un grupo de alrededor de un decenio de nosotros que están aquí hoy. Y escucharán de ellos sobre los diversos incidentes que la gente ha experimentado. La coalición se fundó en el aftermath de esos incidentes y tenemos algunas sugerencias muy específicas para cambiar. Son estructurales en naturaleza. Sentimos que el departamento de policía necesita un cambio estructural, no solo una reparación de justicia después de que ocurrieran incidentes. Otra cosa que me gustaría decir es que la coalición en los últimos 18 meses ha recopilado historias de residentes de nuestra ciudad en un video. Y hemos estado mostrando ese video a varias organizaciones en nuestra ciudad y impulsando la discusión entre las personas que ven el video. Específicamente fuimos a tres de esos individuos y les preguntamos si darían permiso para que nos dieran su testimonio anónimo en dos out of three cases a la comisión. Así que me gustaría en este momento... So I would like at this time to present the DVD of their stories to the commissioners because they're not able to be here today. And I'd like to then see the time over to Sherri, who'll tell you about one of our initiatives.
Well, I see zero on the time chart.
You've got two more.
All right. I just wanted to speak a little bit about an organization that derived from CPR, the Coalition for Police Reform, and that's the African-American Community Academy on Policing. In the city of Santa Monica, the police department has an academy where they invite the community and your chosen after you fill out an application. And they teach you about the police department, always from their history to the weapons that they use, to the incidents that have happened in Santa Monica. And we decided, as the ACAP group, to reverse that and have the police come out to us, and we teach them about the community. We start off with the Black American City Tour that they take and learn about the history of Black Santa Monica.
So we'd like to present this video to your chair. On behalf of those who were courageous enough to tell these stories.
Thank you so much. I appreciate their courage. I appreciate you for bringing them forward. Hamid Khan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Since we don't have a screen, what I brought was something that we use and are organizing out on the street. Thank you very much. My name is Hamid Khan. I'm with a group called the Stop L.A. B.D. Spine Coalition, which came into existence about six years ago to research, understand, identify, expose, organize, and raise awareness in our communities about the massive surveillance and infiltration and information gathering that is happening in our communities. What is going on is that particularly since 9/11, the technologies that are being used on the battlefront in Iraq and Afghanistan, the tactics that are being used, which are known as counterterrorism or counterinsurgency, are very much being incorporated and codified into local policing. You may have heard about body cameras, you may have heard about predictive policing, you may have heard about various other technologies, and all of these technologies come from the battlefronts of Afghanistan and Iraq. Predictive policing was built in Afghanistan to identify and predict when the next act of insurgency may happen. So now what is happening is that these programs are being incorporated into daily policing, and the same communities that historically have been brutalized, that their rights have been violated, continue to be the targets of police violence. Because it's based upon the concept that previous data can help us understand and predict future criminal activity. If the previous data is gathered because of racist policing, so it's going to be garbage in, garbage out. So what that does is, this is a circle, that if you're walking on the street, if you're in a park, if you're on your phone, if you're driving your car, all of these technologies are constantly tracing, tracking, and monitoring you. All of these technologies are used to build databases and data, which is then put into these massive databases in these warehouses where information is being collected, they're called fusion centers. Drones are becoming active. Drones, which in a very benign way, the sheriff likes to say, that, well, they are unmanned aerial vehicles. Well, no, they are weapon-delivery platforms. They are used for massive surveillance of various communities around the country. One of the things that we've been asking, and I really appreciate this process that the commission has taken of holding these hearings, but I think besides the hearings, there has to be an urgent action that needs to be taken as well. We appreciate that the effort is being made to come up with a report, but besides the report, we have to stop the police from getting more tools that is going to cause harm to our communities. One of those tools is this increasing use of drones. We've been able to keep the Los Angeles Police Department's drones grounded for the last three years, but now the sheriff has announced the use of drones as well. We were hoping that the Los Angeles Human Relations Commission would take action and reject the use of drones, because what is happening is that North Dakota has already passed a law that police drones can be equipped with non-lethal weapons. Tasers, rubber bullets, tear gas, and tasers are not non-lethal. Every year, on an average, tasers kill about 46 people in the country. So we are really hoping that this body takes an urgent action, because we believe that there was something, that there was a motion last meeting, and we're hoping that this body takes an action and passes a motion to reject the use of drones. The FAA has come out with a report. In one month, 700 close calls in their lives were drones. Washington Post did a detailed study, and you should look it up, and Google it, is called when drones fall out of the sky. They said that 400 US military drones have literally fallen out of the sky. They've just fallen out of the sky. Right here in the city of Pasadena, a drone fell on a stroller and a 10-month-old baby was severely injured. So what we are doing is that it's not just about surveillance or weapon delivery, it's also about the trauma and safety of our communities as well, because many times, we get caught up into policy and programs, and we forget the human impact, we forget the trauma and the emotional trauma that causes our communities. So I really, really, really appeal to this body to take immediate action. Please take immediate action and stop the sheriffs from using drones. Thank you. If you have any questions, let me have the commissioners.
Questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
By the way, we also have just started a petition. 3,200 people have already signed. They said that we don't want the cops to get through us.
Okay. Thank you again. I appreciate you as always. Luis Rodriguez. Luis Rodriguez.
Oh, there you go.
She's the one, something.
So I'm with the Adruchas Culture Center bookstore. We've been here 16 years. We've been very active in the community in all issues, even though we're a culture space, we're a space that also provides safe space for talking about issues, including policing, including what's happening with the ICE rage, which, as you know, has gone on even more recently. And we really want to share the work that everybody's trying to do to protect our community. I really am grateful for the African-American churches who decided to be sanctuaries for migrants, and also that we, as the Latino community, play a role in helping end the extra policing and extra harassing or whatever might happen in the African-American community. The thing for me is that we have to work together. And the Adruchas is a space in which we have both black and brown, and we try to have a dialogue with our shared, that we really have a common interest and a common needs. And to me, this is what's important, that we look at what we do as the commonality of all of us in this community. I know there's a lot of division, and I know that a lot of people have concerns about all that, and I'm not saying there's not differences that need to be extended and brought out, but I do think that whatever we do in this community, especially about policing, that it be a united effort. Do we need to have a relationship with police that is acrimonious? I don't think so. But I do think that that means if we work with police, that somebody has to be the leader, and I think the leadership has to be the community. You understand what I'm saying? That the leadership comes from the community. That the police being part of the community are part of it, they're part of a bigger package driven by community, not the police themselves driving all the decisions and all the things. There's things being decided with police that community has no say-so in, that we're not part of, and I think that has to change. Now, maybe we have to have a say-so, we have to be the driving force. Then I think we can work much better with police. The issue is whether the police can agree to that. I have been to many meetings where the police have showed up, and I'm not talking about individual, but in general, where they say, they're pretty much running the meeting here, but it's not their meeting. You know what I'm saying? Where they're pretty much dictating the terms. I think as a community, we have to say, these are our terms. One thing is, what's hurting our community is the fact that we don't have a lot of resources. We need resources for gang prevention, gang intervention. There is a lot of gang problems, I understand there's some incidents here. We can change it. We know how to do it. We have the experts, but we have to be brought in. If we're not brought in to support it, then it becomes just an issue for the police, and I don't think it is. I think it's an issue for the whole community. And the police are gonna be part of this package that the whole community creates and sustains, and make sure that everybody's involved. So that's my contribution. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Doctor.
So I just want to reiterate that the goal of these hearings, I know that a lot of folks are interested in bettering relationships with police, and if that's your position, we definitely want you to state that. We also want you to feel free enough to be creative in your recommendations, right? So it doesn't just have to be confined to creating strong relationships with police. And I'm saying that in response to Mr. Rodriguez, that if you think there's other things that need to be done, then that can go into the best practices, it can go into the community recommendations. It doesn't have to be confined to how can we be friends, right? But where you think resources need to be allocated, what kinds of things do you think we need to be investing in, all of that is part of the testimony that we're soliciting here today.
And Dr. Winrin, we're gonna come back and do some of your testimony?
Yeah.
Please, come on down. Let me invite you to your own church.
I don't have any banners to put before, but let me just say that I do represent a coalition of community, African-American community leaders that came together to address issues of policing in black and brown communities, especially in the Northeast Valley. And this, of course, you know, was facilitated by current, a current event. We had a young man in our congregation who was 26 years old. Due to an accident that he had at the age of four, he was mentally delayed. He was generally considered to be about 10 years old in his mind. And whenever he acted out, his mother, who was wheelchair-bound staying with her mother, would call the PATEE. But due to policy change, they were told to call 911. On this particular occasion, they called 911 where he was acting out, and the niece, Melody's, what is her relationship?
Cousin.
Cousin, you know, who was on the phone, tried to give them as much information as possible so that they would not harm her cousin. And she said that, stated it over and over on the 911 call. But within 40 seconds of the police arrival, they shot and killed him in the presence of his mother, his grandmother, and other siblings. That police shooting was supposedly investigated and deemed after investigations as being within policy. It was proven in a civic trial. You know, the lawyer who's here today, a member of this congregation who litigated that case, and I attended, and along with the NWSC president, who's also a member of this congregation, who attended every day, witnessed the trial, and these are certain findings that came out as matters of fact in the trial. First of all, police on the witness was forced to admit that they had falsified their police reports. Secondly, crucial evidence of the trial that was booked into evidence came up missing, such as the knife that they claimed the young man had in his hand, came up missing. Police investigators fouled and was forced to admit on the stand that they falsified their reports in support of the officers. Thirdly, the shooting of Eady was declared within policy, but proven not to be so. Police interview that took place by a black police officer came up missing. And that interview occurred immediately following the shooting. The timeline of the shooting was enhanced in the police reports. The killing of Eady was proven to be, had taken, took place within 40 seconds of the police officer's arrival. The Hispanic officer used non-lethal force, the white officer, at the same time, used deadly force. In other words, one officer shot a tase while the other officer shot his weapon. Jury declared that the police department was 65% responsible for Eady's death. And so that was a financial award to that one minute. Well, let me tell you what our coalition members want to propose. We've been attending these so-called dialogues with the police department, which is nothing more than police manipulating community organizations to advocate police propaganda regarding policing. And what the Los Angeles Police Department is presently doing and promoting in terms of policing is what is called community relational policing. It is my agenda to point out to the community that this is not community-based policing. There is a difference between community-based policing and community relational policing. When you have an occupying force of policing that is basically viewed by the community as an occupying force, it doesn't matter how much relational stuff that you do, you know, you're still putting citizens as well as security officers in danger. That is, the example is, is when you're occupying Afghanistan, it doesn't matter how much you try to relate to the citizens, you are considered outsiders. And each time you approach a native, you know, there is a danger involved. You gotta make a decision whether this is friend or foe. You know, and many times, not the right decision is made. And so what we're suggesting is, number one, what we call community-based policing, that the same officers patrol and work the same area on more or less a permanent basis, from a decentralized place. And what we mean is, we want more localized precincts, that is, community-based precincts. When you look at what is going on in Pocahontas and Lake of Terrace area where you have communities that are basically 85 to 96 black and brown communities, and look at the police, I saw a policing incident in that area, I literally counted the police officers, there were 15 officers there, 12 of them was white. Now, this is an 85% black and brown community, you know, and when you're dealing with community, community, when we talk about community, we're talking about extensions of the self-identity, the selfhood of a people. A community represents people who have some sense of shared sense of dignity, shared experiences. That's why, for example, in Los Angeles, we, but I'm gonna get into that, I'm not preaching. But, you know, what makes other Laker fans as opposed to Sacramento fans? You know, this type of thing. That's a shared identity and this type of thing. And so we want more localized precincts, community-based precincts. We want community-based police commissions that approve and screen police applicants that are sent to police our communities. We want working, we want working in a proactive partnership, working in a proactive partnership with citizens to identify and solve problems in this model of policing. Police are recruited and hired from the community in which they police. Police officers are regarded as citizens in uniform. You know, you don't have, when you talk about diversity training, you don't have to talk about diversity training when police officers are policing their own communities. You know, white police officers, police in 10,000, oh, don't have to go through diversity training. You know, why is it necessary? But any officer, you know, with their extensions of their other people, their extensions of the community, you know, need to have that type of training. They just need to be members of the community and know the community, and know the families in the community, because they are long enough. Yes, my time is up. And, well, I'm gonna get this out, it's my church, remember this? So police officers are recruited from the community, hired from the community, they exercise their power to police their fellow citizens in the implicit consent of those fellow citizens. fellow citizens, community-based policing embodied this consent. Thank you very much.
Pastor, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we got the three recommendations that you've given. I have community-based policing rather than a community relations policing.
Yes, yes.
I have a community-based police commission, which I think is the first time we've heard that recommendation. And that commission would also contribute to the screening of officer applicants?
Yes.
And then the third one that I have is, communities should be citizens in uniform. They have to live and be a part of the communities that they're policing.
We're not necessarily suggesting that a police officer live in the community, and of course, there are some on our coalition who fights for that as well, but we're saying they should at least be recruited from the community.
Be recruited from the community.
They must be recruits from the community and the commission, when they're sent back to the community, the commission will approve their applicants.
Okay. So is that, did you have more of those three recommendations?
No, that's basically the core of it, local precincts. That is, Pocahontas would have its own precinct, Lake of Terrace would have its own precinct. We would know the officers that are assigned to that precinct, and those officers would be approved by the police commission of that community.
Right.
You know, instead of them, so what has happened in the past, for example, they would always say, well, send us applicants.
Right.
You know, send us people and they'll find a way to disqualify them.
Right. So I think, I think that we have those, and then two quick responses. Can you restate the name of the person that you were giving the?
Christian Eady.
Christian Eady?
Eady.
And, and was he killed by LAPD?
He was killed by LAPD.
Thank you.
One question, what was the date of this?
Attorney Robert, could you give us that?
And you were the attorney.
He was the attorney that litigated that case. That's how Johnny Cocker, don't you?
I can tell.
He did a great job.
He did great job.
Did tremendous stuff.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Pastor.
Thank you.
And let me just remind everybody that we are asking you that if you want to speak, there are forms that are in the back foyer right as you come in, so that we can actually time it, make sure that, how many folks we've got. Everybody's got two minutes. We might cut it down if there are too many, but if there are enough of you, if you have more than two minutes, then you can come back around at the end. So I want to announce again, please fill out forms. You can also either testify more privately in the quiet room there, or additionally on video as well.
See, I had the idea that you could speak Spanish. If anyone needs a translation in Spanish. Okay.
Martha Chalmers?
She was giving her.
And you are, so you want to give it to Bahar? Okay. So she'll, she'll get, she'll get four minutes. She got six. Please, go ahead. Good afternoon.
Yes, thank you for having me. It seems like a, well, definitely a really sensitive issue that's going on in this life and world. You know, while I've had many personal experiences, I know there's been many police incidences around the world that are so violently based, you know, and it seems like the true meditation of it all is to understand our multicultural yet commonality of humanity, to use any force other than violence, even when in circumstances where there needs to be resistance to certain behaviors. It's just so taken out of context, and it seems like materialism is really the root of it. I have a lot of pictures, one of these is a caricature with the handcuffs and the dollar sign. It's something that seems to be really relevant and a shame. It's a psychological ill, it seems. I have pictures of an incident. The police have helped me become unhoused through an illegal eviction. I had a rented converted garage with a yard, and the landlady, with the help of the police, as they suggested, had every right to, you know, slaughter the garden, in her own words, because she's the landlady, you know, and they suggested I take her to court because obviously it looks like it is a violation, however, they didn't stop her. So that, that incident, even though she fell the first time, she tried to sue me and evict me, but I had to face three years of further incidents of harassment and very materially based, you know, as the gentrification went on. But I have another incident in the street where about, you know, six or seven police officers surrounded me for riding my bicycle off the sidewalk because I was taking it off. And their expression in these recordings that I took shots of says so much, I think, in itself, I'd like to pass it around for see. You know, ultimately, it's fair a lot of bullying for the sake of helping the rich return. I would suggest community centers and just ways where we can practice kindness and compassion and share our multiculturalism, because it seems like so much of the policing that is so violently produced is so based on ignorance and fear as a combination with money and this material illusion. And, you know, I just wish that we could share our multiculturalism where money wasn't the absolute factor, you know. God said in my eyes, what was open, that we can serve two masters. And if we're living in a capitalist society, ultimately, it might be really just a police state and nothing, nothing less. So, and that's a shame, and it really causes for all of our destructions. It's such a beautiful family we have with all the colors, you know, multiculturalism is a celebration, it's a, it's a reason we should have more kindness to spread, because we have so much to share in our unique ways, you know, and it's such a shame that there's all these ridiculous, you know, just rumors and lies and bad media, miseducation that's corrupting our lives, you know, whether it's the earth, or it's the food, or it's the air, or our relationships, and the schooling. There's so much corruption going on based on this violence that's coming in so many ways and shapes and forms, and it's a shame. I just wish we would create a space to share more with each other and have that spirit of kindness take away the spirit of fear and violence, God willing, you know? Much love to you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have these pictures if anybody would want to see them. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you so much. Is Stephen Schaffen Roberts? Yes? No? Because I know he does that. Oh. Is it Stephen?
So, yeah, my name is Schaffen Roberts. I'm currently the director for the City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program in Los Angeles. And first, I wanted to kind of make all of us aware that we do have a program where we mediate disputes between LAPD and the community. So if they feel like, when I say they, the community feels like, hey, I got pulled over because I was, because I'm black or brown or green or whatever it is, they can register a complaint with Internal Affairs, and our office will set this space up with a mediator that's trained to facilitate that conversation between LAPD and the officer. And we have that conversation, we try to get to an understanding. Information that comes back from those mediations are then fed back to LAPD, and oftentimes we look at policy changes. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. So I want to kind of make three suggestions about what could be done with LAPD, or law enforcement in general, county-wide. One is, I believe, EQ testing, which is emotional intelligence testing should be done with the officers, because I think oftentimes what happens is, they just deploy officers randomly throughout the community, and people that are insensitive, and oftentimes those are people that are maybe due to the force, they're going into places that are of high intensity and tension, and they don't know how to handle it. So I believe there should be some testing, some emotional intelligence testing and training, and those with higher levels of EQ should be deployed to the areas that are, that have the greatest sensitivity. The second is, I think we should have, I think Mr. Rodriguez was speaking to it, but I think we should have community agreements with law enforcement as to how the community itself is policed, because right now, it's kind of like, the police, police are, sorry, I overstepped my, stayed my welcome, but I'll wrap up quickly. Right now, police are policing and are kind of just doing what they think is best. I think ultimately, the community and LAPD and police have the same outcome, that we all want to save community essentially. And so I believe it's about finding an agreement as to how we want, or I say, we, the community wants to get there, which means that they tell law enforcement how that's going to go. And lastly, I would say to look at the metrics, the performance metrics for law enforcement, because look, if you are incentivized to write more tickets, and that's how you measure performance, they're going to write more tickets. But if you say, hey, look, my incentive is to link people with services, then you have people being linked to services and acting as though they care. So metrics should be aligned to the culture that you're asking, that you really espouse that you believe, which is to protect and to serve, and serve being the word that we should focus on. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Just quickly, can you tell us what agency you're with, you say you do mediations?
Yeah, City Attorney's, LA City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Craig Assi? A-S-A-C-I? Did I, no, is that you?
I am.
Okay. Is it Craig anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll submit to you, if you didn't see Vice the other night, there was a, I guess you could say, a segment on the St. Louis Police Department and how it's divided in terms of black cops and white cops. And one of the officers said essentially, within that, they communicated to him, one of his supervisors communicated to him, that there was a predisposition among black officers to be violent and criminal. And he more or less approached his policing based on that and his interaction with the cops before he became a cop, based on that. And that's pretty much the way, that pain is pretty much my pain, because within that structure, I had a gun pulled on me at the age of seven by the store detective. Now, you know, I say that to say, you know, what the Reverend Winron said essentially was what I was going to say, because we didn't create this us versus them mentality as African-Americans. Specifically, if they don't see me as a human being, if they don't grow up with me, they don't know anything about me, so therefore, they'll be rough with me, consistent with that when it comes back to recommendations. The only thing I would really add, as a person who worked with kids, I can see sugar. And some of that same behavior, once they come out of the candy store, I see police officers with, you know, in terms of sugar fat. There was a running joke about policemen and donors. So my only other suggestion is, when you have abuse cases, look at the person's diet. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting point. Audrey George? Audrey George? Yeah, then after Audrey George will be Joanne Berlin and Derek Fortune.
So I wanted to talk about LAPD, which is the most murderous police force in the whole country. For many years, of the past five years, I think at least three of those years, otherwise it comes in number two. In cases like that of Rangan Glenn, who was killed in Venice, you have just one example of how black and brown men, women, and children are killed with impunity. The reason there is such a lack of accountability is because that the police commissioners who are supposed to oversee the LAPD are political appointees and supporters of the mayors that have appointed them. What we need is for the commissioners to step down so that we can have a bona fide civilian oversight body. Some of the changes that need to be made also include the venue. No civilian oversight committee, commission should be conducted within LAPD headquarters, where when we go to those meetings, there are as many as 30 or more police in the room, armed police, surrounding and intimidating the people that are there to attend. They need to change the time so that they're having meetings when people can actually go instead of at 9:30 in the morning on Tuesdays. There need to be no cops in that room. Commissioners must also have disciplinary authority and subpoena power, otherwise, they're just figureheads, which they are at the time. The only other thing I want to say is that they need to fire Officer Kevin Ferguson, who lives in Anaheim, and shot him and discharged his gun while he was off duty in the presence and because of his anger at 13-year-old children who had crossed his lawn. Thank you.
Joanne Berlin?
Hi, I'm Joanne Berlin. I work with the Committee for Racial Justice in Santa Monica, which is part of the Coalition for Police Reform there. And we started thinking about what kind of racial profiling was going on in Santa Monica after the Trayvon Martin incident. So we started back then thinking about some of these issues. And found out that people in Santa Monica didn't believe there was, white people in Santa Monica didn't believe there was racial profiling in Santa Monica. So part of the reason we made this video is an educational tool. But our experience, in Santa Monica, it's a small town, so to speak, so we can actually talk with the police chief and with the city manager, we can have meetings. And we've tried to talk with them about changes in some of the policy, because we asked for all the policy and we wouldn't read it, and mentioned to them that there is nothing in the policy about de-escalation. There is no policy that your first choice in trying to relate to someone is to keep in mind to de-escalate the situation. We sat through the whole trial, many of us, of Justin Palmer, I don't know if some of you've heard about him, he's the fellow, black fellow who was trying to charge his electric car in one of the parks in Santa Monica, and was told that he had to leave because the park was going to close. And he made the mistake of trying to talk to them. He made the mistake of trying to ask, you know, what is the problem here, and I still have some time, and it's important for me to charge my car because I have to take my daughters. So what we've also discovered in trying to talk with the police is that they don't, when they give an order, they don't want to hear anything from whoever they're dealing with. They just want you to do immediately what they say to do, when they say to do it. And if you try to talk to them like a regular human being, you can get into trouble fast. Justin was severely injured and was, one of those police involved in that interaction with him was found liable for use of excessive force. So even in a so-called aggressive community like Santa Monica, there is racial profiling, there is use of excessive force. And I think the biggest barrier to doing something about it is that the police will just not admit that it's happened, they just will not acknowledge it. And so I affirm what everyone else has said about needing civilian oversight. We need to have some kind of way to get regular people from the community to have some say over who is hired and some say over some of these incidents, because even though they were found, this one policeman was found liable, the police department in Santa Monica thinks the only reason that that case was lost, so to speak, was because the jury just didn't like him as a person.
Because the police department was... Was that the police department was Santa Monica?
Yes.
Do you know the name of the officer?
Fujia.
Fujia?
Fujia. He's still on patrol, and he's still on patrol in that same neighborhood. It's over a million dollars, so he's still there.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what has happened to be my personal experience in dealing with the police. It's been, it's been over twenty years, you know, thank God I haven't had any encounters with the police in twenty years. But, you know, in the end, the result of this altercation, the police was called out and basically just for what they had explained to me at the very beginning, a disturbance call. And that was about the side of it, you know. They had, I was talking to somebody through a car window, and the police was called, right here at the Northridge Mall. And the police came and they blocked the car off, and one police officer ran around the other side. And, you know, before they even started trying to see what was going on, they had attempted to mace me. And one of the, the cop that shot the mace had missed me and hit the other cop, because they were on both sides of me. And then, and then after that, the one cop that just took me and, you know, slammed me from the hood of the car to the passenger window of the car, the driver's side window of the car, and then to the trunk of the car, and then down on the asphalt, with a hundred and two degree weather outside, and maced me while I was apprehended, you know. And then, on top of that, they charged me for intent to bodily harm, not on just one of them, but both of them. And those were like two of the worst charges that I have had, you know, in my time. You know, it really affected my career and my job opportunities. And right now, I work in healthcare, I do a lot of work with substance abuse and domestic violence in the past. And, you know, every time that I, you know, on behalf of a client, I've come and come over to the police and they run my name, they don't ever seem that I can be on the same side as they are, you know. And it's just, you know, it's been rough, and it definitely affected, you know, my career opportunities, you know. What do I recommend? That they have more training to learn how to de-escalate situations. And not to mention, real quick, I had it all on video. I had the Northridge Mall, I had a video, and I still couldn't beat my case. And when it went into the courtrooms, they switched attorneys on me. And next thing you know, my disturbing and peace charge turned into felony intent to bodily harm to police officers. And without proper representation, you know, I ended up having to take the charges.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. Robert Miller?
I just want to briefly add a little historical context. Think of the history of police violence toward African Americans in particular. Goes back, to write that history, you would have to write a very, very long book, multi-volume. It would go back to the origin of police departments in the South. They came out of slave patrols. Later on, police in the South collaborated with the KKK. We have the convict leasing system, whereby people were arrested for trivial things like loitering and ended up being slaves for a year or two. Well, on into modern times, murdering black Panthers, torturing and murdering people at Attica Prison, the Ferguson thing. It goes on and on and on. And like of all that, how can we possibly trust police to police themselves? It's ridiculous. And yet, that's the situation. They have autonomy. And we need commissions that have, as Audrey said, hovering power, subpoena power, disciplinary power. But in general, I think we need to, not so much improve the police as to get rid of them, replace as many as we can. Instead of having police come and deal with mentally ill people, have mental health professionals do that. Instead of having police deal with the homeless, have social workers work with them. The more we can, if I were a black person, the mayor of West, I would have a police who has stayed as far away from me as possible.
Thank you very much. Wendy Winston? Then after her?
When my daughter was fourteen years old, a couple days before Christmas, we went to Hollywood Boulevard to go shopping for Doc Marten boots. Her and her white punk rock-looking boyfriend. We got out of the car, I didn't notice that the cops had already cruised around the corner from us. But he went up, it turned out, he was older than I thought, he was nineteen. But, and he went up against the wall and kind of crouched down and lit a cigarette. And then we kept walking. Next thing I know, the police pull up onto her, they throw him against the wall, they put his arm back here, and his arm was injured. And he screamed out in pain, and my daughter, you know, tiny little daughter, fourteen, just saw this injustice and freaked out and started yelling at the police and cussing them out. They threw her down on ninety pounds and handcuffed her and threw her in the police car, told him to get his ID out of the car. So I'm walking back to the police car, and I kind of heard something, but I wasn't sure what it was. I got his backpack, and as I'm walking, I see like sparkly stuff on the street. And I get back there, and my daughter had kicked out the back window, she had a panic attack. And she was crying and screaming, and the police ended up, you know, taking her away. And I had to go to the police station, get her out, they gave her a resisting arrest and vandalism of police. It went on for two years, she ended up being in residential placement for two years. Then she went to Community Juvenile Hall for six months and finally got out. I mean, it was like from sixteen, fourteen to sixteen and a half in the system. Because we were shopping for Doc Marten boots on Hollywood Boulevard. And then there was another time, I'm a recovering drug addict, I quit clean in 1988, but I had incidences in Santa Monica, me and her, my oldest daughter's father were kind of known. So we would get pulled over, our arms checked, the cars searched, just on like a periodic basis, like just driving down the street. Another time, I was raped in West Hollywood, this is when I was about nineteen. And I was like, I was kind of like into Bowie, and I was married to a gay man. I was just into being like male and female, both together. And so, you know, you couldn't kind of tell what was going on with me as far as sexually. But I was raped, and I called the police, and I was crying, and they came up to me and laughed. Because they couldn't tell I was a boy or a girl. And then another time, what was the other time? Uh, that, oh, I was at, I was married to a gay man, and we wanted to all go to this bathhouse, a gay men's bathhouse in Beverly Hills. And so they had like painted me up and put a dildo down my pants, and, you know, it was kind of fun and cute. They didn't let me into the bathhouse, because I wasn't a man, didn't have a man's ID. So I was just leaving the bathhouse to go back to my dad's house in Echo Park. These guys are cruising around, they're cruising around, they offered me a ride. And I'm like, okay, and I get in the car. Then they start driving down Wiltshire Boulevard, getting around Normandy. I mean, twenty minutes is going by, they start like hitting on me, you know, trying to get me to have sex with them. I'm sitting in the middle of them. And they pull up into this vacant lot on Wiltshire Boulevard around Normandy, and then they offer me money. So I do, I say, I'll give them a blowjob for a hundred dollars. They bussed me for being a prostitute. And I actually got a lawyer that time, and they ended up giving, dropping it down to resisting arrest, or disturbing the peace. But I just wanted to go home.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Donna Perkins?
Hello, my name is Donna Perkins. I live in North Hollywood, and I'm also a member of Black Lives Matter in Los Angeles. I don't have any personal stories, but I want to support the need for investment in more mental health counselors and social workers, both in our schools and in the community in general. We need better job training and job development. These are the things that keep us safe. We need less police, and body cameras alone won't keep us safe. We remember Brother Africa, who was killed on camera. We want to see the effective use of the funds to be allocated under Proposition H and Triple H to help end homelessness. We remember Brendan Glenn today, along with all the other homeless and homeless people killed on Venice Beach. We also want to participate in citizen oversight to help end the corruption in our current law enforcement as evidenced by the conviction of Lee Baca. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Theo Gil?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Theo Gil, and I'm a member of the NAACP, as well as a member of Reseda, with our Church of Christ. I would speak briefly on experiences that I've had with the police, which are both negative and positive. I have been treated over the years, over many years, with abuse by the police department, and a case where one of them come around and do something to them partly. There would be a different reflection in my mind upon what the police is all about. But of course, when Dr. Monroe was up here stalking, and speaking about community-based policing, I agree with that one hundred percent. And it's most definitely what we need. We need people from the community who were raised in the community, who was a part of that community, to be encouraged as a police officer, to be encouraged to go back and perhaps to live in that community. But we can't do that because of the lack of funding and the unwillingness of our system to deal with a blind community, with a diverse community and a problematic one. One of my chief concerns is for the training of police officers. I'd like to know if that's how much training they have in the area of mental training. It is my opinion that they should have, by all means, background check from individuals who decide that they want to become a police officer. I would like to know why you want to be a police officer. It doesn't seem like a very interesting job to me, and it's a dangerous one. So why would you want to be a police officer? The background check would try to weed out those who come from the family and their history in that of the KKK. We don't need members with such backgrounds that are on the police force, and I dare you that. And then some of the people who own the police force, we need background check to find out if they have negative encounter with people of another race, where they harbor this hatred within their mind, within their soul. And their ambition is to go out and reflect harm upon other people. And being a member of the NAACP, this organization that I'm a part of, Chapter Ten, Sixty-Four, San Fernando Valley, it is my concern also for some of the health issues that we have, who we, I've heard it mentioned several times, like mental health, and the people who deal with those problems. We most certainly need health professionals to deal with those problems. This young man that Dr. Monroe was speaking of that was up here, believe you me, he was a harmless young man. He was a peaceful young man. He was quiet, he was cared, and he was lovely. But in a matter of minutes after the arrival of the police to that address, he lay on the ground dead. That is sad, from any way you look at it, no way you can justify that whatsoever. I sent out to the tribe of that case, and I found that they came back and said as if they acted within police policy. That caused me to wonder what are police policy? Where do they come from, and who are the people that make these policies? Then that was a civil suit after that, which found the police officer was directly at fault in taking this young man's life. A mile of cash award for gratitude, I think. But believe me, a cash award cannot replace the life of the police officer, like this thing at the end of the day. They want home to their families, their planet, their children, their, 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 their fellowship and time with their wives. But this young man was trying to remember them again. This young man, who might have stepped out simply because of ill-trained, ill-prepared police officers. Therefore, I wonder, I wonder about the training, how, I wish someone could tell me. You know, that's what qualifies an individual to become a police officer. What qualifications do we need for you to give him a baton and a gun and send him out into a blind community? Send him out into a diverse community? If the six months of training that a police officer has received enough to give him a gun? That's almost like taking a blind friend and sending them to school for six weeks and give them a schedule. I don't want him out for a week only. I don't need that. My life, it's my time, man.
Yeah, it is. Ian? Well, thank you so much. These are excellent questions, and thank you for reminding us of that. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the pastor for opening the space for this public hearing. I'm thanking the elders that at least brought to your attention about where slavery comes from and the KKK and the connection with police slavery. I also want to remind you that L.A. Sheriff Lee Baca, if you didn't know, was going through court last year, February, and was found guilty. He recanted his plea in order to get it sent out of L.A. County so that they can not know what's going on, and so that he can pretend that he had Alzheimer's. I'm thankful for the attorney general that found him guilty on corruption. So imagine all the years of him being in office as L.A. sheriff and all the cases that were ignored. Okay, so now we're kind of going to feedback. Nick from Law, thirteen-year-old. Why is that officer in Anaheim still there? There's many more, many more names and hashtags. When are people going to take this seriously and treat people as if they're your own family? If you put your daughter, your sister, your mother, your cousin. This is the mindset that we need as people to come together. We can't be complacent and just pretend like, oh, well, it's not my issue. This is where we start. If you're serious and you don't want it done to you, think about the If you're serious and you don't want it done to you, think about the next person. Chief Beck has to go. Who is behind Chief Beck? Follow the money.
Trina Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here and I'm glad because this is an important thing, that we raise our voices to what's happening and I know that one of the things is what are the incidents that we may have to relate about what police are doing in our communities. And while I haven't been the direct, directly affected in a case myself, I know that in our communities, it happens constantly. And so I don't want to speak to a particular incident. I do want to speak to the kind of situation that we live with as a result of that kind of an atmosphere. And I come here as a director of a nonprofit, which is a cultural center bookstore that I founded with my husband Luis. And the reason why we founded it was to give another option, another way to be in community and another way to recover. Because in many ways, what we're recovering from is the very poverty of access to resources, the poverty of access to dignity, a poverty of imagination of what this world can be like if we have the ability to see each other, hear each other and accept each other. That's what's wrong with, I think, what's behind the way we are, what we have right now. We have in place a force that's alien to our communities. This is why I think what's being proposed, that there be policing, community-based policing, that is, I think, what has to come back. We have to have places like, for instance, the one we have, and they should be all over, in every community. There should be a space where we feel safe enough to tell the truth about what's going on in your homes, in your community, in your schools, so that we don't have the issue of having to deal with things by force, where we can actually heal, become more well, have the kind of responses for ourselves and others, where we don't have to resort to violence and control, where we can control ourselves, where we know ourselves well enough to know that when we look at someone else, we're looking at ourselves, it's as if we're a mirror. And that's not what we have right now. We have an us and them mentality where somehow we are the enemy and we are to make control to put down and that has to end. It contributes to the kind of mental illness that we're seeing everywhere. And again, I think the root of it is poverty, which I have to say, one of the things that I'd like to announce also, and I'm sure all of you know of this, but there is a growing movement to really ground things where it's not based on protecting the institutions and the things that maintain poverty, but rather this access, the question of access again, to the kind of human abundance that we have and making it real in our communities. I think that there's a way to do it, again, community centers, churches that are community-based, that really listen and really bring out people to their fullness. So I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak and we are one of the anchor organizations. We hope to see the kind of response to the question of immigration and policing, one that's fair and that really, again, we start to see each other as brothers and sisters. We are fellow human beings and we need to respect each other in that way.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for being here. Pierre Habila. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Pierre Habila and I'm a lifetime resident of Pacoima as well as the executive director of The Great One Haters, a community organization that is devoted to using hip-hop culture, athletics, as well as the arts to empower youth and families throughout our neighborhoods. One of the main things that I came up here to speak about was about the lack of privilege that there is in our communities. Granted, that's a story that's been tried and tested and put out there. I myself am the 1% in Pacoima. I'm an highly educated individual. I was blessed enough to be able to get a full ride scholarship to go out to Brown University. But even at that, that doesn't stop me from getting that pass essentially, that hood pass from the police. Because I'm still, in that sense, put in a position where if I'm out with my kids, my Great One Hater Juniors, my youth leadership group, and I'm showing them our own community, showing them our history and our values, here comes the police sire, they stop us and they say, why are you guys congregated together? Now, I want us to think about what's been going on since the gang era essentially out here and things such as gang injunctions that have been put within our communities that we tend to not speak of anymore. Granted, these are things that people think out of sight, out of mind, the cholos aren't walking the streets, gang begging anymore. But these are things that still affect us. This is a history of things that has been impacting us. So we must review gang injunctions. We must review similar policies that have come from gang injunctions, especially in underprivileged communities, because that disallows young individuals like myself to rally other young individuals and really make a difference, because we're all considered gangsters at that moment, no matter our education and privilege. Another thing is more collaborative programming with police officers. We've been blessed enough to be able to collaborate with LAPD and Los Angeles School Police Department to do wrestling programs, to do cultural arts programs and give the opportunity to the police officer to be humane, to dis-humistify them, to show the people they are human and there is humanity in them. Just to speed things up here, we must also think about the cultural violence within our community and this pipeline to criminality that we actually create and still, especially within our own undocumented immigrant communities. If we have individuals like ICE or other federal agencies coming in here threatening to deport individuals in their own place and being, that actually creates more opportunity for criminals to be criminals. Individuals are scared enough to go to the police officer and now you're telling me that they're thinking in their mind, well, I'm going to be deported, so I might as well not tell them that I got raped so that I don't get deported. And in that sense, it becomes an issue because you're creating that direct pipeline. So let us think about community response committees, let us think about community action committees with bargaining power that comes from the city and the county. Neighborhood councils are great, but they have a lot that they have going on with them. So we must also develop individuals, organizations that can come together as collectives and work hand-in-hand with the overseers essentially. Hopefully, we can actually change that title to something more true to officer, because in that sense, we're just promulgating the same values that have been promulgated since America's history of slavery. With that all being said, let's definitely continue this work that we're doing here. Thank you so much for coming out and really trying to understand what our viewpoint is. This is something that's amazing and I hope it continues on.
Let me just ask you a question. You mentioned community response committees. Can you talk a little bit more about what that means?
Yes, exactly. Actually, I have a perfect example. There's a church, North Hills United Methodist Church, Pastor Fred Morris, who started a refugee center out in North Hills, California. North Hills was aka Sepulveda, prostitution central. There's a big immigrant community there, there's a big gang community there, there's a lot of underprivileged individuals that live there, lots of violence. In response to this, the United Methodist Church created the refugee center to be able to give the safe haven to immigrants within the community to come out, say what they have to say, get resources without feeling that they're going to be put in harm's way. Essentially, they've been able to develop into a nonprofit collective and the idea being that when there's ICE activity around the area, they'll call a hotline. The hotline then sends a text message out to all the community response members who then go to the location and stand up for the individual, whether it's recording to make sure that you don't implicate yourself in the criminal activity that is going on through ICE or just essentially speaking out and telling them to get out. These types of things show the power in people, show the power in collective energy and let us not allow them to take that away from us, because our collective energy is what's going to allow us to overcome all this as well. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Your prayer?
Hello. Nice to see all of you here today. I've been waiting for this opportunity to get a chance to say these things. There's every owner of mine to me that can do something about it. I watch the news every day, all day long, and I've been doing it for a long time. My thing is, is this, is about, for the police is concerned, you know, everybody has a lot to say about the police bad, but the thing of it is, we really need the police. Without the police, this world would be in chaos. So we need the police. But what we need is for the police, if they're going to dress up like army men, they should be able to conduct themselves like army men. Like a Marine can take a knife or stick from a man or a woman. Police officers should be able to take a knife, a stick, a bat from a man or a woman. They should be able to, if they ain't going to take it from them, they should be able to shoot them where they don't have to kill them, but make them where they can't be harmed. Police officers need a whole lot of training. You know, they act like Marines and soldiers, they dress like it. They need to conduct themselves like, so, you know, all this unnecessary killing needs to stop. It truly does. And I remember from like, in the early 70s, police officers used to shoot you in the leg, you know, just to stop you from killing. And that's what police need, the police need to stop killing people unnecessarily. That's the simple thing up and off of it. And it goes back to what the brother was saying, he was saying about how the police need to have a better background check. They do. We need to know where these police officers come from and why they want this job, you know? And just as simple as that, we need to stop, the police need to stop killing a whole lot of people unnecessarily. What do you look like? Here you are, a man shooting a woman who got a pole. That don't make sense whatsoever. You know, police, if they got to shoot, they want to be shooting in the leg and then, you know, take the pole away. And that's, you know, that's the simple thing, you know? And for us lately, you know, people haven't been speaking about the police killing blacks lately because they haven't been doing it. But, you know, as we remember, you know, just recently, you know, blacks have stepped up and said, hey, man, if y'all go, you know, if we're going to die for a cause, if we're going to die for this cause, we're going to kill the police for killing blacks. We don't want that to happen. That seed is already planted. We're going to bring that to an end quickly. So, you know, police need to be instructed that, hey, if that can, that type of behavior keeps going on, it ain't going to do nothing but get worse and worse. And so we need to stop that before it gets started, because that will lead to a civil war. You know, blacks against police, then it's going to be blacks and whites and then, you know, everything gets out of the way. So we really need to do that. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
God bless you.
I've got Rosalyn Scarborough, Tara, after her, and Sue O., after that.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I wasn't going to talk because I coughed, but I thank you for the water. My name is Rosalyn Scarborough. I'm a member of this church, but I'm also the president of the San Fernando Valley NAACP. I'm not going to be long. There's a lot we can say negatively regarding law enforcement. Lord knows, we have plenty of opportunities to do that as well. I just want to mention, we here, you don't have to worry about it, I won't use it, I won't be using two minutes. We here in the San Fernando Valley have had many negative experiences with law enforcement, but we've come a long way. You don't see the level of brutality here in the valley that's prevalent and other parts of Los Angeles, because we had our time where the home of the chokehold, which happened to a member of this congregation and the NAACP, under the leadership of Jose De Sosa, put Pacoima on the map. We also are the home of the battering ram. Both of this was with LAPD Foot Hill Division. We had the battering ram, the chokehold, and then the Rodney King meeting. We also then had the young man who was killed here. So we've had many opportunities to have negative impact with law enforcement, but we've come a long way here. And so what I want to say is what we're doing, just, it is going to take a multi-layered and collaboration with many different entities to solve the problems with law enforcement that are not only about law enforcement, about the education system, it's about many institutions that are embedded, that are entrenched in long histories of racism. But just one small thing that we are doing with the NAACP to try to bring about some change, we believe that the main problem with why law enforcement kills so many African-American men is because they fear them. They say they're in fear of their lives, but the reality is, they're just in fear of a black man. So because that is prevalent all across this nation, we believe that that's because they don't know one another, they don't get to know one another. They don't move in the same circles, they don't run into each other in the grocery stores, they don't run into each other in social situations, they live very separated lives. And many officers tend to probably live in places that are safe, where they can have their kids out, you know, at nighttime. And then when they encounter black men who live in war zones in many cases, where they're having to have this tough exterior just to survive, once they encounter one another, they're in fear, all of a sudden, next thing you know, a black man is shot. So what we're trying to do is to bridge that gap, to break those barriers. And so we've implemented something called, I'm sorry about that, okay. We've implemented something called Breaking Barriers and Breaking Break a Basketball Bash. We're planning right now for our next one, we started it two years ago, where law enforcement and the community, preferably men who have had negative experiences with law enforcement, interacting with officers who had negative experiences with black men, coming together and playing basketball together. The teams are intertwined, not them against them. And then, once that's over with, to sit down and share a meal together and then get to know one another. So we have that coming up and we're looking at sometime either June or July. The dates are being worked on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Steve, Ms. Mark?
My question is, you say that things have improved and beyond this particular example that you gave around breaking barriers, can you speak to why you think they've improved in this community?
Because they've been in the limelight. They've been, we had Christopher Commission. In fact, I believe the Christopher, the Christopher Commission just ended in January 2013. Then saying, and then a few months later, the young man was killed. But they had a lot of opportunities to work on the rules and things with law enforcement and we do work together with them. We're trying anything, because I have a whole lot of ideas, but it's not something I can really just share in this setting this quickly. But we are working with them, trying to bridge the gap behind the scenes. But we just had a lot of years where we've been, where they've been bomb blasting in the media, you know, and so they had to do something different. But the Christopher Commission was probably one of the biggest things that changed it.
Thank you. Tara?
Hi, everyone. Thank you to the committee for hosting this and the church for letting us be here. I'm really disturbed by a lot of things. I do appreciate the man who spoke before me stating that she believes things have improved. Like, since what timeframe? That's kind of my question. Like from the 60s and 90s? You know, I was, I was raised out here and in 96, you know, 98, I was stopped by the police just being targeting the class and was slammed on the... Can you stop my talking?
Don't, don't apologize.
I'm sorry.
Take your time.
I'm a grown woman now, but that day, I never, I never even thought I would experience something like that. I was just targeting the class with my friends and we missed our bus, we had to walk and the police stopped us. And because I seen it on TV, I'm like, oh, what's the meaning of this officer? Because I've seen people say that on TV. The cop can tell that the Chinese women police officers too. The cop can tell that a crime is a women police officers too, white women. Grabs me from my wrist from behind, slams me on the car, cuffs me, searches all of my belongings. And I'm in the eighth grade. For children to have to experience that and never feel safe from being a child to an adult feeling safe by the police, that's a problem. To me, that, that doesn't see improvement. They don't have to just kill people in the street for their, to know that there's an issue with trust with the police in the community.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was kind of my preface to what I'm going into. But recently, there was a shooting on, on Saucin, between our fitness. A man was killed on March eighth. His family was not notified until the thirteenth. He got three kids. His family can't find him. He had some type of mental breakdown episode. And the police are there trying to help him. And, let's see, and I guess out of frustration, they were with this man about two hours. They still decide to kill him. That is unacceptable. We have to have resources for people in our community. There needs to be a certain, especially when people are having mental breakdowns, there needs to be a certain, not task force, but mental health professionals to help these people who are having breakdowns. These police officers aren't trained in mental health and where they just get frustrated and take someone's father, take someone's boyfriend or husband or partner. And now these children have to grow up without a father. Unacceptable. And, and I know within the time when we're trying to figure out other ways to either engage with the police department, abolish the police department, what have you, there needs to be a timeframe. Once they kill someone, the clock starts ticking. They need to be required to have a, a full report and, and turn around and give information to the family. We're allowing too much time for them to corroborate stories. It's annoying. It's, it's frustrating. Damn, damn them. I'm sorry. I'm in a church. I'm sorry. Um, forget about those, um, what else? Those cameras. That's like, they need to have everything. They need to separate these people, get their statements, and make sure that their stories make sense. When they spend a month's time to hang out and get their story together, that's a disservice to the community. That's a disservice to this family, and they not getting real answers. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tara, um, the account of the brother that, um, you were mentioning that was killed on March eighth, do you know what law enforcement unit, um, is responsible for?
It, it was the Sheriff's Department, LA Sheriff's Department. And his name was Dennis Todd Rogers.
Thank you.
Oh, and he had a degree in accounting.
That's good. What's the last name, Dennis?
Todd Rogers. He had a degree in accounting. You know, this man, he had a life. He, he, he had a career. These are people that are taken out of our community.
And he was unarmed, correct?
He was also unarmed.
Thank you.
Sue O?
She pretty much said it all, so hard to follow behind that. I personally, in LA, as well as on the east coast, New York, whatever, but here in LA, have been stopped for driving while blind, have been stopped for walking while blind, have just been existing in the space that I am supposed to be in, in a supermarket, at a park, at a bus stop, and stopped and harassed by police for no reason, right? The only tickets I've ever received in LA were for parking tickets, right? Everybody gets those. Not, not for felony, not for abusing anybody. I've never been arrested. I've never, I'm not, um, what do you call it? A delinquent of society, yet I'm constantly treated like one. I have a master's degree, right? The, I think it was the brother who spoke earlier about him needing to get out of this situation. I too am one of those people. I come from poverty. I got myself out with the help of a lot of people, but I got out, right? But I'm still treated as if I'm not. As she stated before, police cameras, um, the cameras on their bodies don't do anything. We're not seeing the cops. We're only seeing the community. We know what the community's doing. Everybody's talking about that. Everybody's cheering. You go in an ablehood after a shooting, everybody knows what happens. It's the cops who then, as she stated, go back and corroborate their stories. It's not us, right? Like, we need to readjust the funding that's going to police and put it back into our communities, right? We don't, I learned when I was at a vigil for this young man, this brother who was shot on Saucin, I learned there that there isn't, the community can't say, hey, this sister, this brother, this person is having a mental breakdown. There is no number that you can call to come get help for them. You can only call the cops. And we know how they respond to us. That needs to change. We need to change where our funding is going because the cops aren't for us. That guy, um, in Anaheim, why is he living in, um, living in one place and, and serving in another community? That shouldn't happen. The people who we trust with human lives, look at doctors, look at therapists, right? Look at all the folks who we put our time and our energy and look at the amount of schooling that they need to do in order to take care of another human being. Yet cops have what? A couple of, you don't even have to graduate. You don't even need a degree. You just need a couple of, of courses. And if you're a certain age, you need to go through a six-month program. Nobody ever heard. That's not enough. That is not enough. And you can see by the fact that LA, what, the, uh, the county and whatever, they go back and forth between being the two most murderous, uh, police folks in the country. We see the effects. Like, it's time to change.
Thank you. Teresa? Please go forward.
I wanna know how many people know about Waukesha Wilson? A year tomorrow? Why are video cameras being not available to the family? Why is Charlie Beck not releasing the videos to the family? Um, Waukesha Wilson was in the LA jail on a minor infraction. There's been many stories collaborated. She didn't pay herself. She didn't commit suicide. If that is the case, why is it taking a year? We're basically saying that LAPD is not responsible. You're blaming it on the jail, which are still up under Charlie Beck's demands. Okay, we're also gonna talk about the situation in Inglewood, where two couples with seven children were shot in their car while they were sleeping. Why is it taking the LA, excuse me, the Inglewood mayor more than a year to continue to run and hide from the people that are demanding answers? This is what I need people to come together and think about. You can't just think about it. You have to take action. You have to get involved. We can't sit here and say that there's an answer for the police. It needs to be dismantled. The money that is being issued for them for these body cameras that continuously fall off and, oh, no one knows that there's video showing what happens? And the same police continue to walk? Ask yourself why. Ask yourself why. If you're a decent person, ask yourself why. Why the money is being spent on body cameras, this, that, and the other? But yet there's no money in the community for elderly, for the homelessness, and for education. Ask yourself why.
Amen Abdullah?
Just real quickly, I wanted to add to what I was just saying. Pierre, Viola?
We're the eight, one eighters.
We're the great one eighters, yes. Uh, I just wanted to say, aside from this conversation about what we can do in our current condition with police, we also have to think about after the fact. Let's think about the judicial system as well. Programs such as the Neighborhood Justice Program, right the wrongs that a lot of these officers are doing. So when the local artist who doesn't have a canvas, so goes out to the street and puts up his piece out there, and he gets arrested, he's sixteen years old. Now he's gonna have a lifetime of criminality. Through the Neighborhood Justice Program, they're able to essentially be tried by their own people within their community and not have some outsider essentially tell them, well, this is the thirty-five thousand dollar fine, and you are now spending X amount of time in prison, and now you have a record for your entire life, which then, as we all know, creates the pipeline of poverty. So let's think of, as well as thinking about what we can do to reform the current condition and situation with police officers, let us also think about these programs that assist us in righting the wrongs that are being committed. Neighborhood Justice Program, Summer Night Lights Program. I'm not all for all the gang, the grid programs that are out there. There's a lot of inequities that are coming out from city programming at times, but it's actually something that's happening. So at the very least, let's continue the funding of these types of programs because they prevent intercomplaining, they demystify the police-community relations, and they also right the wrongs. And that's really at the heart of it. I've been able to be blessed enough to sit on, during one of these Neighborhood Justice panels, and it's an amazing thing. You see the catharsis really happening within the individuals. And a lot of the times, if the community is involved in essentially sentencing them, quote unquote, that language isn't used, let's say, let's put the quotes and quotes there. When the community is involved, the youth or the individual involved in the activity, the criminal or delinquent activity, is actually more apt to, now having pride in their community and having this sense of ownership because they're granted that much. Thank you very much.
That sounds like a restorative justice model you're talking about.
Yes, restorative justice, definitely. So it's the Neighborhood Justice Program is part of, believe this, City Attorney's Office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I just wanna thank everybody again for coming out, for bringing your testimonies, for bringing the testimonies of others who might not have been able to come forward to talk with us today. As Commissioner Bill told you at the beginning, um, we will be having a few more hearings. One is on April eighth, although I don't think we know where yet, which will be focused on women and LGBT community, queer community. Um, so please look on the website. You can give your information to your staff, and they'll let you know about the future hearings, um, both that one as well as the one that's focused on law enforcement. And of course, um, as you mentioned, we will be coming up with a report. But that report will be reflecting all that we've heard from all of you and other communities around the county. Um, and our hope is not just that we will be persuading, educating the board of supervisors, but that we'll be working with all of you and your community groups um, in order to apply not just pressure from us, but pressure from all of you on what you want, you need, what we all need for our community broadly beyond policing. Um, so with that, I, um, I get to declare this public hearing adjourned and thank all of you for coming again.
Hi, my name is Shelley Crawford. This is my son Andre. Um, we have a situation where Andre was arrested, um, from school, and they did not notify me. But most, let me take you back to where it started from. Andre is my foster son. I'm his legal guardian. He's under an IEP, which gives him a right to stay in school until he's twenty-two, if he wants to. But he's under an IEP. And I say that because I felt that when the police came to the school over an incident that happened off of campus, they should have called me and not waited to call me after they had cuffed him and took him to jail. Although I know he was eighteen at the time, he still is under an IEP. And there were records, they would have been found useful. They probably would have prevented it had they called me and asked me about it. Um, my main point is that once he was arrested, he stayed incarcerated for a day and a half. And, um, I reached out to an organization that I'm a part of, which is the NAACP. And, uh, the president came. We all met down at court. I had his regional service worker present. And at court, uh, the sheriff came out, and he said they were going to release him. So he didn't even see a judge. He didn't go into a courtroom to be charged with anything or, or to be asked to come back. He was released, and the charges were dismissed. Now, this is a problem that I'm having today. Andre was sent a notice in the mail from Community Care Licensing stating that he can, he can't, for the rest of his natural life, work at any childcare facility, anything dealing with children because of the incident. However, he was never charged. He never went before a judge, like I said. I think all of this would have been eliminated had the police called me from school. I feel that a new policy needs to be implemented, that if the police come to the school, if it's a high school, no matter how old they are, they're still in high school. There, he's under an IEP. And especially if you have a disability, I feel that the police, it has, it should be mandated that they call the parent, the legal guardian, to come down before they arrest that child. Because to us, they are still children. They're in high school. He's under an IEP. And I think a lot of the heartache and humiliation that he suffered behind this would have been prevented had he been Caucasian and had I been able to be present during the interviewing. They had him write something and sign it. And I hold his legal rights, so I should have been present. And that is a problem I'm having. I feel they need to have different policies implemented and put in place so that these kids that are falling under IDPs that already have disabilities, he's already, he has disabilities that have been diagnosed through a psychiatrist. There are things going on that could have been brought out to prevent this. And the young lady that it concerned, um, was his girlfriend of a while, and they had both agreed to something. And she was scared of her parents, so she just said anything. And from that, that's why the police were called in, if you wanna know what happened. But, um, just to keep it semi-private, I just want better policies for these kids, especially African-American kids that fall under IDPs with disabilities, that the parents, the legal guardians, need to be called first before their drug development. And now he stands with a, um, you know, just like, something against him that'll prevent you from getting a job anywhere. And I'd like to have that expunged and removed completely. So there also needs to be a law in place that if they're not charged, if they don't go before a judge, that those need to automatically be erased off the books completely. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, I'm Jay Farrell, I'm a resident of Venice, California, and I would like to share with the committee some of the things that actually go on on a daily basis in Venice, California, as far as the people with a housing are concerned. Number one is they wake you up at six, six-thirty in the morning, and you have to take down your dwelling and leave the area. Number two is that if you are caught at that expression, of course, anywhere in the area, they will write you, uh, no law or ticket. Uh, number three is that, uh, they will not allow you to come back to your residence, uh, until after nine o'clock at night and ought to lay down and go to sleep. And then, at that expression, they will come at one, two, or three o'clock in the morning and tell you about, uh, three or four inches away from the curb, thirty-six inches away from the curb, you're blocking the sidewalk, and write you a citation, and so on and so forth. And this is just plain harassment. And I really feel that because Google moved into the neighborhood, they have been especially, uh, dedicating to serving Google's wishes and not have anyone around their building. And I thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, my complaint is that the horse cops do not belong in Venice, California. They're part of Metro Division. They're not part of Pacific Division. They harass people continually. They bully, they intimidate. They have no vested interest in the community. Something, the pastor just said is that police should know the families in the community. And the Metro Division is sending the horse cops to Venice, and they are just have, it's like a war on the homeless. A friend of mine was riding his bicycle on the boardwalk. He was homeless. And they stopped him. They gave him a ticket, and it turned into a big problem. They arrested him. Had a tourist been riding a bicycle on the boardwalk, they would have ignored it. So there's a, um, just an attack on the homeless. And the horse cops are bullies. They harass. They intimidate. And I think they should be removed from Venice Beach. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I have certain stories that I would like to share that I've experienced myself and, and other friends of mine facing police brutality, where they're, you know, too aggressive and having a lack of understanding of the situation at hand, more so taking sides of the residents, and adhering to their every corner of the resident, and fully understanding the situation and treating us as if we're part of the community as well, more so than just seeing us as a problem that the residents see us as, and relating that to the police. So, they see that, so they see us as a problem too, and being called out whenever you have, instead of, instead of just having a common ground for each parties. I mean, I've seen a friend of mine, you know, being harassed and being handled very aggressively when he was clearly speaking, you know, you know, speaking, speaking, you know, from very, from self-control and, you know, being all out of discondo and compliance or whatever they wanted to do, but they still were applying aggressive, aggressive holds on him and, and just making it look like he was acting all out of his mind, and, and as if he wasn't doing what they were saying, but it was clearly, and it was clear that he was saying and, and acting in accordance to what he was saying to the, they brought a medical truck and, and treated the case like he was being mentally challenged, when that wasn't the case. So, what they did was, they was cleaning up the street, and one of the guys that was cleaning up posed himself to be a police officer, and, and my friend, you know, adhered to what he was saying, and then later to find out that he wasn't a police officer, but posing as one so he can give some type of authority instruction to my friend, but then him realizing he wasn't, you know, it's, it's false, I don't know that you recall it, but that's just, you know, that's just wrong or whatever. But, I mean, for solutions, which I've heard, one should be where the, where, I mean, because they're, you know, like, we hire the police force for the community, so the community should have full control of how they control the community and how they go about certain protocols when attending to these needs that the community have. And, yeah, and, and people within the community, which also are a solution, are ones to be hired and ones to actually patrol the community. They live there, understand the people and the things that go on within that community, because everyone is different, so there's no way you can, you can train a police officer in general for every community and know the ways of that community and the problems that really go on. So, hiring within the community and, and only serving the community the way they want to be served is, is two-part solutions that need to be done. There's no other way, there's no other way, no other solutions that can be done, the way it's set up now has to be reconstructed. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
I'm Peggy Lee Kennedy with the Venice Justice Committee, and I wanted to be more clear about recommendations that I would give to the county Human Relations Commission regarding police. Proposition H was just passed, and I would say that any spending, any one cent of that should have oversight by people that are not part of, say, social services that are dependent on city funding, so it influences their view, and community members that aren't taking money from law enforcement or the city, or in league with law enforcement in some way. I think that they should be activists or people who are unhoused themselves. That's regarding Proposition H. Because the city did HHH, and they had this committee, but they got, and even built into it to have this oversight committee for spending. But, you know, it turned out that ex-city employees were hired in some such, but it didn't, it doesn't have real oversight, we need real oversight on the spending, so that it isn't just law enforcement-led actions that are called services being taken against homeless people like it's a war on them, which is how they treat it, it's a war against homelessness, and it's an assault by the LAPD. Another thing I want to be sure to recommend the County Human Relations Commission is that any spending besides Proposition H, we form a more formal committee and really look at this spending and how much of it is intertwined with law enforcement, because law enforcement should not be the first responder to homeless people, we should be looking at all of the issues. There's a lot of issues and a lot of different types of people that are homeless for different reasons. You cannot provide services based on law enforcement when there's no housing, it doesn't make any sense, it's a waste of our money, and it's very expensive. Thank you.
Hello, yes, my name is Wes, and I just want to say that I've been listening to a lot of solutions, but I haven't heard no real clear solution to, to the problem. And it's, it's real simple. When you have cancer inside your body, what do you do? You go in and you extract the cancer out of your body. And throughout the black community for years and years and years, every rebellion that we've had since 1865 has involved the police. So, what we need to do is simply take white policemen out of the black community. That's going to be the solution. All of us wanting to play basketball, we're going to talk to them and all this, it's not going to work. To be trained is not going to work. They're trained, they're trained to do what they want to do, is to kill black folks. So, you guys got to start voting correctly, getting rid of the Ricki Thompsons, getting rid of Maxine Waters who don't stand up for the black community. And this is what we're going to have to do, or we're just going to continue to suffer.